Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling to order the regular meeting of the Jackson City Council for the City of Jackson, Mississippi, October 22, 2024. It is 10:11 a.m. And so with that, we're going to welcome to the podium Pastor Ronald K. Moore of Stronger Hope Missionary Baptist Church. Welcome Pastor Moore. Following his invocation, we will remain standing and say the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'm going to ask Mr. Foot to lead us in today. So with that, everyone, please stand for the invocation. And Pastor Moore, you just push the green light, push the button for the green light.
Thank you, Madam President, for your invitation to come and share with you this morning. Shall we bow? Eternal God, our Father, we're grateful to you for all things, for your goodness, your mercy, for your steadfastness, for your love toward us. Grateful, dear God, for this city, this state, this nation, this world, that you allow us to sojourn in. You've given us a moment, you've given us a period to stay here to try to do some good. We're grateful. We realize that you do not need us, but we need you. We're grateful that you stand by our side, that you walk with us, and even in our city now, we invoke your presence. We pray, oh God, that you would love on us, that you would guide us, that you would keep us in your care. Bless, dear God, our mayor, bless our city council and other leaders in our city, and bless all of the people of the City of Jackson. We pray, dear God, for this meeting. We pray that your spirit would be a part of it. Pray that your spirit would be a part of every decision that's made here today. Bless us now and keep us. In the name of our Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foot, and thank you very much Pastor Moore for that wonderful invocation. Okay, colleagues, we've got a lot of busy, we've got a lot of, a lot to do before we actually get to the agenda today. We have a good many folks coming before us for public comment, but before we get going on that, I'll run through everything before we get started. Colleagues, do any of you have any announcements before we get started this morning? Okay, thank you. Just some quick housekeeping. Number one, Mr. Banks is joining us virtually, so we have five council members here at the moment, and which is a healthy quorum. And then we are going to table colleagues, items 22 and 24 today. We will also need to take item 16 before we vote on claims. All right? And so with that, we're going to jump right into public comment. We're going to take the, the one that is attached to an agenda item first, and I am, I am so sorry, I really don't know how to say this first name, and I don't want to botch it. So I'm going to say, I think, is it Ms. Lewis or Mr. Lewis? I am so sorry. Okay, here to speak on the parlor room, which is attached to item 26. Nobody's here. Oh, she's coming. Oh, there you are. Hello. All right, so as she's making her way to the podium, let me just say this. We allow three minutes for public comment. The clerk of the council right here will give you warning when your time is nearly up. Welcome, gentlemen, as well. And we generally don't have a lot of conversation attached to public comment. We want to listen to you. We want to hear what you have to say. And so with that, Ms. Lewis, please state your record, your name for the record, and then please begin.
My name is Nikimdeli Lewis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please turn on the mic. Thank you. And make sure it's in front of your, you can move it. Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, Madam President, council members. My name is Nikimdeli Lewis, and I'm here to represent the parlor room that's located at 357 North Mart Plaza. And I also have the owners of Taste that are across the street from us. I think they're at 350 North Mart Plaza. And I have prepared a letter that I just want to read to you guys. I am here to express my concerns regarding the treatment of my business, Parlor Room, a proud establishment in Jackson. Recently, we have faced pressure from certain community leaders to close our business, and I feel it is essential to address this matter directly. Our business has always aimed to serve the community with integrity and respect. We are proud to contribute to Jackson's economic vitality by generating tax revenue and providing jobs. However, it has become increasingly apparent that we are being unfairly targeted, not due to any wrongdoing or poor business practices, but seemingly because the color of our skin. There are several similar businesses in our, in our area that offer the same services and face the same challenge. It went out. Okay. Such as parking, I lost my place. Such as parking and noise from live entertainment. I have personally observed these businesses operating without the scrutiny that we are experiencing. This inconsistency raises concerns about equity and fairness in how our business is treated and compared to others. Moreover, we do not have the luxury of collaborating with legislators to secure funding for a $2 million parking lot as some for-profit businesses do. This disparity highlights the systematic, the systemic equities that often affect black-owned businesses. As residents of Jackson, we have a deep love for this city, and we are committed to being positive and responsible members of the community. We are eager to work collaboratively with community leaders and residents to address any concerns that may exist while continuing to provide a valuable service to our patrons. I believe that open dialogue can help bridge any gaps in understanding and strengthen our partnership with the city and community. Thank you for your time. And I also want to add that we, our business has also met with city leaders, the police chief, the fire marshal, and they have worked with us on what things need to be done to kind of keep down confusion. But, but also on that, in that same note, police officers have just been popping up at our organization and telling us that we need certain permits. And I just think it's unfair because I don't think other businesses are getting permits for special events just to be open. So I just wanted to come forth and...
Well, we appreciate your coming before us today. And do you happen to have a copy of that letter that you could email or send to the clerk of the council so it can become a part of the record?
I will. I can email it to her.
Okay. Yes, there's the address, so it can become a part of the record. And thank you for that.
Okay.
And we welcome all of you here today, and we're glad that you came before us. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, so now we're moving on, colleagues. I am having trouble. Okay, we're moving on to the next public comment section, which is, this is a section that is not attached to an agenda item. First on the list is Ms. Willa Womack. Ms. Willa Womack? Is Ms. Womack here? Is she outside? No? Okay. We'll move on to the next one if Ms. Willa Womack comes in. Somebody, please let me know. Mr. Luke McClinton. Mr. Luke McClinton? Oh, there you are. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. McClinton.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
My name is Luke McClinton. I was here at the last meeting, and I just want to read that on the 25th of January, we had an incident in our neighborhood where a police car lost control and crashed and damaged our entryway brick columns. Okay? That happened back in January of this year. Okay? We're in October, and that's still yet to be fixed or addressed. As a matter of fact, we received a letter dated the 17th of October.
Sir, I'm sorry, folks can't hear you. Could you speak a little more directly into the mic so everyone can hear you? Please forgive the interruption.
That's okay. We received a letter dated the 17th of October that states, the investigation has revealed that the cause of your damage does not substantiate legal determination that the city is liable for your damages and is pursuant Mississippi tort codes and things of that nature. You know, I just want to kind of give a parody because if a resident lost control of their vehicle somehow and came through that intersection out there at Pascagoula and President Street and damaged any city property, and nine months later it's still yet to be fixed, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that that person would have some type of issue going on with the city right now that's not favorable to them. We have actually asked and spoke with the risk management people in reference to this, and it's like, you really can't get in touch with anybody, you know, when you're trying to call to get these things done. And, you know, no disrespect to, you know, anyone out here, but if this had happened in any other neighborhood, I'm going to use Eastover, and just like the young lady mentioned earlier, you know, if this was not, it feels like a race issue. It really does. And it's not to say that race is 100% the reason for it. There's no way you can actually say that race does not play a part in it, because if I were Ms. Lindsay, you know, like you, and if I lived in Eastover, and if I came down and I said, hey, look, police car lost control, damaged property in our neighborhood, and nine months later you tell me, we're not going to fix it because that's what this letter says, then that would be an issue. So when I come and I ask about that, you know, we're not asking for anything but support from you guys, because when you have events such as the county fair, when you have things at the zoo and things like that, you want us to come out and support that, spend money with the city. But when it's time for the city to come on the other end and take care of the damages that it caused, let's be fair, there's no other reason why our property is damaged because of what the city did, and now they're denying any wrongdoing or denying anything to actually fix it.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, can we get someone to interface with him while he's here today and see if we can...
We can, yes. Louis Riceo. Mr. Chris...
Wait, wait, wait just a minute, Mr.
Sir, Mr. Gray will be here.
Mr. McClinton.
You know, Mr. Gray? If you will get with him to get the information, and he will get with you, and he'll get it back to me as well, and we'll see what we can do.
In all due respect, in all due respect, I spoke to Mr. Gray about this. Mr. Gray has had, and not to throw him under the bus, but Mr. Gray has had this information since March, when this originally happened, because that's when the original claim was filed. So to get to continually getting with people and giving them things that you guys have access to, because this information came out of a city office. So he has access to these people that work at the city, and it makes it feel as if we're doing what you guys are getting paid to do.
Yeah. Now it's coming to me, and I'll get with risk management, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Excuse me. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I just want to understand, the vehicle that entered your property...
Well, I apologize, sir. It was neighborhood property. It's the entryway of our neighborhood. It's a police car, channel three on your side covered the whole thing. That vehicle, you know, again, thank God that the officer was okay. You know, that vehicle lost control, came through the entryway where our neighborhood is at, and damaged the brick, the huge brick thing. And that happened back in January. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Wright now has your contact information, Mr. McClinton. Thank you, Mr. Wright. All right, next is Ali Mohana, who is here to speak to us about Hotel O. I hope I said that right.
Good morning. My name is Ali Muthana. I am the father of Noah Muthana, the property owner of the Hotel O on I-55 North Jackson. We appreciate the chance that was given us by you guys for the rehabbing or cleaning the hotel. We received a letter that was sent on the 24th of September, but for some reason, we received it late, and that letter gave us a chance of 30 days to get this property cleaned up and boarded up, and that's what we had started doing right after we received the letter. We met with multiple contractors, and one of them was Mr. Dennis Wayne Love. He's a known contractor here in Jackson, Mississippi. We have a contract with him, and we signed a contract for $70,000 that will clean the property up and board it up, and that's what we did. We're almost 99% done of what needs to be done, and we really appreciate the chance and the time to prove that we could do anything to get this property cleaned and ready for a better future. Maybe we might sell it if so, or if we were given the chance to do anything else there in the future. We are, you know, in compliance with all that.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate, we thank you for coming before us today.
You're welcome.
Do I have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Foot, did you want to, please just stay there. Mr. Foot?
Can you tell me where, this has been a, an issue for some time. Judge Jeff Reynolds has been the primary...
Mike, Mike. You just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm...
Okay. But can you tell me where you stand on paying taxes on the property?
Well, three months ago, we just paid $33,362, if I'm not mistaken. That was just like three or four, exactly in, in June. And even though the property been shut down since 2021, there is no income, and we've been trying the best, you know, to protect it and paying tax, which is the property tax. But the business been closed for almost three years.
Okay, so where do you and your son live?
Well, we live in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. We, my son had bought that property and bought another house, and the purpose was to buy the property and the house is to move to Jackson and live here and invest in this city. But sadly, things didn't go the way we thought it would go. The property was shut down for no reason. The property was running. The property had 11 employees at that time, and Super 8 came and gave us the green light to turn it to a Super 8. A contract was signed at that time, and we even paid the franchise fees to turn it to a Super 8 hotel. But fire marshal kept coming, almost three, four times a month, giving us new orders to fix, until we brought, they brought us to court. And in court, we, we were not treated fair at all. And the first court date, I remember, the judge said to my son, if he say one word, I'll put you in jail. And at that time, my son had a same envelope like this with almost 14 pictures, trying to hand it to the judge to see that whatever was asked by the fire marshal was done. And the judge said, if you say one word, I'll put you in jail, and he ordered to shut the hotel down for no reason. So we left, we couldn't say anything at that time, and they kept bringing us back, you know, and forth to court. And another incident that could, you know, that I could mention, we, Judge Reynolds gave my son 150 days to rehab the property, and we were so happy with that decision. But sadly, like six days later, the attorney called and he said, we have a court date on the 13th. So we just met the judge, I think, on the 2nd of March of 2023. And back on the 13th of March, or the 14th, we were back in the court, and the judge ordered to put my son in jail at that time for no reason. We don't know why he was put in jail. And at the same time, the, a lady from the, from the permitting office, I think, told the judge that it would cost $50,000 to repair the fence, the swimming pool fence. We spent $250. We were missing two panels, and she told him that it would cost $50,000 to repair the fence, and the judge thought we repaired the fence for $50,000, and we never did that. That fence been there since Sherton built it maybe 20 years ago, and we never spent more than $250 for the fence. So based on that, he took the decision and put my son in jail. And while my son was in his custody, another court date was set on the 17th, and he, they didn't even bring my son to court. And on that date, he ordered to demolish the property, and he put $1,265,000 bond. I don't know why would that, that bond is for, 1,265...
Of course.
Yes, thank you. All right. Mr. Hartley, and then Mr. Griselle, did you have...
Counselor.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hartley, and then Mr. Stokes.
Just a question. We have a zoning department. We have code enforcements. Were they in contact with you? Because this section is responsible for public health, ensuring that facilities are operated correctly, to ensure that there's no public health concerns, sure that the aesthetics of that community is preserved, and to ensure that businesses are run fairly, the way they should be run. When these things are violated, then it goes before environmental court. Okay? We have a problem here in the City of Jackson regarding folks that come in with businesses that don't live in the community and don't care about the community. So what we do is we have this process that we go through, and our process, I'll stand behind it. We have a legal department. And so you're talking next level, but before you even get to that level, it comes through us. And we're dependent on, the people depend on us to do the right thing and to have these businesses out there. And I've seen pictures, having been to the facility, atrocious conditions. Okay? So I'm afraid our process will stand, and I support the decision of our, of our legal system.
Well, you see pictures from one side, but I wish you see the pictures from the other side.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. I see you don't wear glasses. I understand you can see what's going on. You tell me in here today that you didn't see all the homeless in there, all the prostitutes, all of the negative activity that was taking place at your business, and you did absolutely nothing to stop it. Everything you're doing today, you had plenty of time and opportunity to do something, but you didn't care. You didn't care about the citizens in that area who trying to live. You didn't care about the businesses in that area that's trying to do something. You have almost destroyed one of the brighter parts of Jackson with this neglect that you or your son, whoever else was involved. But you're going to come to us today and tell us that y'all did everything right and everything was good. That's the biggest lie that's ever been told here in City Hall. It makes no sense that you come in here and make it seem like everything is good, but you wouldn't live like that. You wouldn't live like that. Your family wouldn't live like that. But you treating the citizens in Jackson like they're dirt because you saying you want to make some money. Now, I'm gonna stand with the City of Jackson. I'm gonna stand with the mayor and those citizens, but we want to invite you to a meeting Thursday that we're gonna have right on Manhattan, Fresh Start Church, because I want you to come tell those people the same lies you're telling us. Thursday, 6 o'clock. You don't have to respond to me. Come to the meeting.
Well, I wish you allowed me to respond.
Thank you. Mr. Griselle, did you want to add something?
It's...
Wait just a minute.
Just a few things.
Mr. Griselle?
It took a lot of bravery for you to come here today. And our issue is not with you per se, because you don't own the property. But councilmen hardly spoke to the process. The process is a lengthy process, but it's also a thorough process. I go to groceries, to the grocery store right across the street from that hotel. I wash my car, my dog goes to Petco, and I can't help but, on my way home or on my way to get something to eat, pass by seeing drug users, homeless people, prostitutes, animals, doors off the hinge. You can see all of the debris on the inside, all of the uncleanness in an area of town that is really on, is on a main interstate, a main thoroughfare. What bothers me most is that you come in here and you say that the judge did X, Y, and Z to your son for no reason. There was a reason behind every single thing that he did. And I'm sad because your son is not here to speak for himself. He threw you into this, and I understand what you're trying to do, but I'm gonna finish by saying this, and I'm gonna get permission. I want to be the one to throw the wrecking ball into that building. It's coming down. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. And thank you for coming before us today. We, I think we, you, we have spoken very clearly, and so with that, we're going to move on now to the next public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
First of all, good morning. Is, make sure I pronounce your name. Muthana?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Muthana. I want to acknowledge publicly something that Mr. Muthana did sit down and meet with myself and attorney Drew Martin. And I just wanted to say this because at that time, what you expressed was that as you were trying to make some of those repairs, you were unable to get the permit to do it. And I just want you to know that we did follow up on that. We were able to find no evidence of an attempt to find, to get a permit, right? And so I just, if you have that evidence, right, then we would like it, but we were unable to uncover, and I, that's one of the main things, the principal things, I said, Drew, if he's saying that, then I want to ensure that, that he was, you know, if he was denied, that we correct that part of the process or see what the issue was. And so I just want you to know that, that your conversation with us did not fall on deaf ears. We researched it, and if there is evidence of that, then, then I would ask for you to, you know, produce that to us.
Well, Mr. Lumber, we have contractors that want to the, to the permitting office to pull permits. I wish you guys listened to me today for one minute, because, you know, this is the same thing that's been happening in courts, the same issues. For example, right now, 30 days ago, on the 24th, you guys gave us 30 days to clean the property and board it up, and we spent $70,000. And now you guys going forward for the demolition. That's, those are the same mistakes that been happening since we started, you know, since we, my son bought that property. We were given 150 days to rehab the property, and then two weeks later, we are back in court. Someone have to listen to us, too. Instead of, you know, let's talk about it here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, please. You know, we will meet in the federal court. There are a lot of people made mistakes, and we will sue them all. I'm trying to just look to the future.
Sir.
A lot of people, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, listen, I'm sorry. Listen, we have a very full agenda.
But a lot of people made mistakes, and we're gonna sue them.
Sir, I understand your frustration, sir. Sir, sir, I understand your frustration. There is not anything more this body can do for you, but listen, and we have done that today, and then we have, you know, responded. Council members have responded. We must move on with our agenda. Thank you for coming before us today. This is for, for another time.
This is the, the last and the biggest mistake that's gonna happen, because we were never giving the chance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir. Sir. Okay, thank you, colleagues. We're moving on now. We have Addie Green from Bolton, Mississippi, who wants to speak to us today about downtown
My friend. To the president and the council, mayor, and the staff, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come to talk about your meter problem. The meter problem is a problem for all of us, meaning that our seniors, we're not educated on it. People come to town trying to buy the tags, pay their taxes, and many times, there is no meter for the handicap to go right there and park, but they have to go down the street to apply that registration. And then after you get that violation, you can't call anyone that will answer to the telephone. It's a big mess. The citizen, as taxpayers, I pay taxes here in this city. The citizen do not want to have to go down the street and find what you call the meter and apply their information as their registration on their vehicle. And I want to ask the council if they would re, I'm praying that you rescind your vote on that meter, on those meters. vote on that meter, on those meters that center around the city where we have to do business, around the courthouse, around the board of supervisors' office, around where we have to park out here, to come and make our complaints. I want you to make sure that you answer to the people, the voters, their problems, so that they would be able to park and be able to tell you what their problems are. And in the wars, we want you, before you decide to make a decision for the citizen, we want you to go and ask the citizen who put you here. God want you to have the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to feed your people. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. All right, we next have, um, Mr. David Archie, and he's here to talk to us also about downtown parking. Welcome, Mr. Archie.
Good morning, Madam President, other council members, the mayor. Good morning to you. Y'all made a mistake. You made a mistake by trying to find ways of receiving money or getting money to operate this city by putting these parking meters downtown. And the reason that I'm really here today is because a disabled veteran could not find a parking space. He had a disabler pass in his window, as well as a disabled veteran parking on his tag. And when he came back to his car, the only place that he could park was in a meter. Didn't have a parking place, and that fired me up. Now, Jackson, Mississippi is, is in a state of emergency. We have all kind of issues and all kind of problems, but this is one problem that we can solve right away by removing those meters, uh, rescinding the contract with this company. And I went to find out, uh, the company name, and the company name is SPT Parking. Uh, they supposed to be down on River Drive or River Street over by the old YMCA. They're no longer there, and we supposed to send our money to that company, and then they're breaking the law because of this and research on the law in terms of excessive amount of money in terms of the ticket. Now, you have the right to charge a certain amount for the ticket, but when you get into $24 ticket and then you don't pay in a certain days, you raise it to 44, 50, they call that something excessive. And I would like for your attorney here, uh, there has been a Supreme Court ruling in California that where they brought a lawsuit against the city. So they are breaking the law, the council is breaking the law. Let's just remove the meters the same way we removed the lights that once was taking pictures of people tagged. You couldn't get that right. If you need money, go to Washington, DC, go to the State House, beg, plead, ask for money to run this capital city, but don't put the burden on the people that are coming downtown to trying to do business, pay their taxes, go to court. Jackson is not ready for that. We're not in New Orleans, we're not in Atlanta, we're not in Washington, DC. We have, um, um, illegal drugs in this city, we have homeless, a problem in this city, we have abandoned houses, we have infrastructure downtown. You, you, you can't even ride to get downtown to get to a parking place, but yet and still you gonna put the burden on the people. It's not right, and it's not fair, and I'm gonna ask the public to join me in a protest to have this council to rescind their vote on these meters. They got to go. It's just as simple as that. They got to go.
Thank you, Mr. Archie.
Thank y'all so much.
Okay, um-
Can I ask one question?
Uh, yes, Mr. Clark.
The veteran you mentioned at the beginning of your discussion, what happened to him? He, he parked and then he, did, did they disable his car?
I have it here. I have his parking ticket. I'm gonna pay the parking ticket out of my pocket because I feel so bad for the gentleman. I have, and have a, a picture of his tag in my phone. I went out and-
Hey, I just wanted to find out what, what happened.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have the ticket right here. So now they putting the burden on me.
Thank you.
I'm gonna fix this problem for him, but we gonna fix this problem for this city.
Thank you, Mr. Archie.
Thank y'all so much. Appreciate you.
Madam President.
All right, um, yeah, what, yes, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. My request, the clerk, to give us a copy of that contract. Uh, I don't know if other council members are on it, so we can see the whole thing, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanna double check and make sure that Mr. Edward Childers is not here. I was told he had left. Okay. With that, colleagues, this wrap, this concludes our public comment section of the city council. We're going to next take a discussion item out of, out of line, out of order, and that is item number 25, which is a discussion on Thal Yamarah Hall, because Mr. Ahmad is, uh, Al Turk is here, and he is, he's the principal on this and is helping resolve these issues. And so he came before us yesterday during work session and gave us a brief explanation of where we are, and so, um, we thought it would be good for you to come back and do the same again today. Thank you, Mr. Al Turk, for being here.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Just to give you an update, uh, you know, we have been involved with the Thal Yamarah Hall for the last few weeks. Uh, the first thing we did is actually evaluated the environmental assessment that the city has done with a, with a third-party contractor. We also assessed the only bid that the city received from Bill Four, which was for 2.9 million plus, uh, to, to fix, remediate the facility. Uh, so we, the first thing we wanted to do is to actually evaluate what is needed to be done, not only to remediate the facility, but also for this not to happen again. Uh, so the, the reasons that this happened is because there's moisture in the building, the air conditioning was working, was not working properly. Uh, so, so really, to, to remediate the facility without fixing those root causes of the problem is just basically asking for this to happen again. So we looked at it from a comprehensive perspective. Uh, so, uh, the remediation process was, was not fully complete because there were some elements that were missing. Uh, when we went and toured the facility, we found that not all of the mold was identified in the environmental report. There was some mold above the acoustic tiles all the way to the ceiling that were, was, was not in the report. Uh, we also discovered that there is asbestos and there is lead in the facility that also the report did not address. So really, there was more work that need to be done from an environmental perspective that, that we felt that it's important for us to, to address as well. Uh, so, uh, on the remediation side, uh, we asked the environmental assessment company to come back and do additional testing to prove that there is asbestos issues, there is lead, and, and we kind of comprehensively look at the, at the mold component. They issued a revised report, and we took that report, which was the basis for the scope of work for the remediation, and basically we asked, uh, four different contractors to, to submit a price on this. The scope of work was significantly higher than what we had before. Uh, so with, with a higher scope, we actually received the bids, uh, la- last week, and we selected, uh, guaranteed restoration as the most responsive from a qualification and price perspective with a, with a, a price of about 2.48 million dollars. So basically, it was a half a million dollars lower than what, uh, Bill Four bid in the first time with a significantly expanded scope. So the, the scope, the additional work was also probably another half a million dollars. Uh, so basically, you saved almost a million bucks by, by actually doing it the right way. But also concurrently with this, we wanted to address the, the other root causes of the problem. Uh, so, uh, the air conditioning system, uh, was, was not working, so the city ordered a, a chiller. Uh, the, the chiller was received, is now installed. Uh, there's a second chiller that need to be ordered as well, uh, which will probably come in the next few, few months. Uh, but, but also, there was some other areas. There were some leaks from the roof that actually caused the water to be bonded in the, in the facility. There is some drainage and plumbing problems, so there's water inside the facility that's, that's bonding. And as you know, when there's water, heat, and humidity, this is just a recipe for additional mold in environmental areas. Uh, so we also are in the process now of, of, of getting bids for, for the roof repair, for all the plumbing and the drainage areas. And also concurrently with this, the fire marshal came in and identified, the state fire marshal, and identified other problems there that we're also including as part of this work. Um, and, and, uh, one of the elements of the fire marshal was actually the fire curtain. Uh, the fire curtain is, uh, was built when the facility was built, uh, and this was made from asbestos, so it, it really needs to be replaced. Uh, and, and, and it's, it doesn't work appropriately, and this could be a, a safety hazard, which the fire marshal identified. So all of this work, uh, you know, we estimate the cost of, of, of the complete package, uh, you know, to, to fix the remediation, but also address the, uh, the root causes of the, of the remediation problems. Uh, this cost about, almost close to about $5 million, 4.9 something million, million dollars to do this. Uh, the contract that the, the city entered into with the remediation company, they're supposed to be completing all of the work by January 18 of 2025. Uh, we're trying, assuming that the city has the funds to, to, to accomplish this, we're trying to do all of the other elements concurrently with the, uh, between now and January 18th, uh, to, to actually have the facility reopen at that time. So that, thank you. Any, any questions?
Thank you. Um, colleagues, any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Since I want to, thank you for coming and telling everybody, updating everybody at the council meeting, and I think you gave us a time certain that everything should be completed and back up and running and everything. Do you feel comfortable that this timeline will be met?
I'm, I'm very comfortable from the, all of the, uh, work from the contractors that this will be done. Really, the only issue is, is funding. Uh, so my, my understanding, the city has about 2 point, uh, or closer, about 2.9 million of appropriation that came from the state. So really, you're short about $2 million, so which is issue that really the city council and the administration need to address. But from a technical perspective, if, if the funding is secured, uh, we, we will definitely meet the, the deadline of January 18th of next year.
Are you gonna oversee the project?
We, we are, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to commend and, and thank, uh, Mr. Alturic for his, uh, his hard work. Uh, he has not only been helpful with respect to Thal Yamarah Hall, uh, but his engagement with the city has already, uh, from multiple reports that I've received, saved the city money on many projects, uh, where his background and technical expertise was able to reevaluate projects and see, uh, where there were some expenses that we didn't necessarily have to incur. And so, uh, I just wanted to express that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, and, um, my, it's not, um, thank you. Well, by the way, thank you, Mr. Stokes. Pardon me. Thank you, and we appreciate you coming before us both today and yesterday. And Mr. Malinbecca was also here yesterday, colleagues, and he is working diligently to find the additional $2 million that we need to finish out the project. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, we're now going to go back to, okay, this isn't gonna work because Mr. Stokes has to have a microphone.
Yours is working. Yours is working now.
Mine's working now? Okay, thank you. Here you go. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grisell. It's always got my back. All right, so we're gonna move on now, col- colleagues, to the consent agenda. Clerk?
All matters listed on the, the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Colleagues, I'm assuming that no one has any item they wanna remove for additional comment. So with that, all in favor? Passes with Mr. Banks. Are you still there?
Can I get another agenda?
Mr. Banks?
I feel like I'm missing something.
Mr. Banks, how do you vote on consent agenda? Did we bela-
He raised his hand.
He raised his hand. How could you say that?
It came across the thing.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Foot-
Can I make one-
Is that official?
Comment regarding the consent agenda?
Well, we just voted on it.
No, we hadn't. It's unfinished.
Yeah, we did. He raised his hand. We did. Um, sorry. Okay, so we're now moving on to, um, 16. Okay, so we're, Mr. All right, so we're now moving on to claims, but we're gonna take item 16 first.
Order ratifying the procurement of towing services by the municipal garage for, from Hall's Towing Service, Inc., and authorizing payments to said vendor.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Could we get the facts on item 16?
Did you hear him, Ms. Tims? Mr. Stokes just would like some, um, the facts and additional information.
It is my understanding this is past due bills that did not get paid when, uh, the services were rendered, and they're ratifying them to pay them now.
A total of $11,000?
It goes back over several years. And I think it's multiple departments.
Thank you.
All right, so any other questions or comments on item 16? Mr. Hartley?
Uh, yes, and this is to that same vendor then, so it's not, it's just, you know why there was a breakdown here and that particular vendor didn't get paid?
I'm not sure. Uh, they're not the only one. You'll be seeing hails come before you also. Uh, there were another vendor that didn't get paid for towing services.
Okay, thank you.
All right, colleagues, any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? I think, was that a hand?
He raised his hand. There he is.
Okay. Oh, I see it. Okay, thank you. All right, it passes with a vote of 6-0. Thank you.
No, no, I vote-
Oh, you voted, um-
No.
Oh, uh, okay, Mr. Stokes voted no. All right.
14.
There's no vote 6-0, 6-1.
It's, it's, it was 5-1, 5-1. All right, so we are now gonna go to claims. Item nine.
14.
Four, 14? Uh, we have to do 14 as well? I didn't get that message. All right, item 14.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and related documents with keep J- Jackson Beautiful, Inc., in the amount of $40,000 to develop and promote litter prevention program and activities in the city of Jackson. I'm sorry.
Is, uh, item 14?
No, that's 15, I'm sorry. Order amended in, in order previously approved on July 2nd, 2024, to correct a striveness error ratifying payments made pursuant to said order and authorizing the payment of several invoices related to the hosting of fitness classes at Palm Bridges Park.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Uh, any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstaining.
Okay, Mr. Banks? Is he still, where is he? There he goes. Okay, so we have one, Mr. Stokes is abstaining, and then we have five in favor. All right, now we're going to move back. Is there anything else that needs to come before claims that I don't know about? Okay. All right, so now we're going back to claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 55 to inclusive their own municipal documents in the amount of $8,47,820.72 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. Um, Ms. Tims, would you please go over larger claims for us?
Sharon Tims, Deputy CFO. The larger claims this week is Trustmark National Bank for Public Works. It's the 2019 note for November 2024 payment from Fund 392. This is $7 million note. It's the $1,058,200 that we spoke about when we're talking about refinancing, when we're making that payment. Uh, Richard Disposal's Public Works, $851,000. That is the August 2024 residential collection, Fund 9. Richard's Disposal Public Works, $851,000. That is the September payment for 2024 residential collection, Fund 9, landfill and sanitation. Then MV Contract Transportation Incorporated Planning and Development for $452,258.60. That is the July payment for the 2024 operations and maintenance, Fund 187, transportation.
All right, thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions? Mr. Foot?
Thank you. I'm looking on the, in the page here right after for number nine, and it lists a, um, $2,045,981 for landfill sanitation fund. Where do we stand on getting the sanitation, the- Where do we stand on getting the sanitation, the payments for garbage pickup from Jackson Water? Okay.
The payments should be, they should have resumed and be going forward as they're supposed to under the consent decree, based on where we are right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Terms of garbage pickup. We have a number of residents that's being missed. And as they call Richards, they tell them they have to wait until the next collection date. We have a number of citizens where garbage is not being picked up. When they call Richards, they tell them they have to wait till the next collection date, which leads to problem, dogs tainted to garbage, where they have bags out. And then, if they not picking up timely, it's something in the contract that penalized them. And if so, how do we get it triggered?
Drew Martin, City Attorney. There is a provision in the contract. I haven't seen it recently enough to say exactly what it is, but there is a provision in the contract that specifically provides for the city to provide notice of who's not getting picked up, and there is a penalty associated with that. I have to pull the contract to see exactly what it is, but there is something that addresses that in the contract.
Who should the citizens call? They call Richards, they're not getting satisfaction.
Yeah. If they don't, if they're not getting a response from Richards, it should call Solid Waste with the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I'd like to, I thank my colleagues for bringing it up. It's a very important point. We need to keep track of these individuals, and calling the city is the first thing, calling the Solid Waste Division is the first thing towards getting reimbursed for a lack of pickup. I also would like to mention, Solid Waste used to have an inspector that go out and verify, and I'm not sure if they have that now, but we need to be verifying to pick up a furniture, special around the West Jackson area. I'm starting to see a lot more furniture just on the side of the road, and it's not landlord-type furniture. So, I continue to report it to Solid Waste and hope others do too. My other question, Mr. Attorney, is this, Jackson Water. They are starting to reimburse us now for, for the solid waste?
The reimbursements have resumed and should be at full amounts going forward. There's still gonna be a dispute over the months that weren't paid. There's gonna be a dispute about those amounts. There is a dispute about those amounts, but they are resuming those payments.
Do you have a timeframe, or have the money started flowing already?
Yes. I'm told, yes.
Because we desperately need it within Solid Waste for other things.
Absolutely. So, and we're looking at how to recoup the other as well, but there is an ongoing dispute. We'll need to discuss about that. One other, Mr. Wright also mentioned in response to Mr. Stokes' question, that citizens also call three-one-one to make those reports if garbage isn't being picked up. But ultimately, I would say it needs to get through to Mr. Wright or to myself so that we can, as you just said, Mr. Hartley?
Keep track of it.
Consolidate them and make the demands that we need to make.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions or comments on claims? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Miss? Mr. Banks, were you? You know what? I should have waited, and I don't know if it was for or against, because there's such a delay. I should have waited till... Okay. So...
But three to two. Yeah. Three to two should have carried today, then.
Well, I mean, yeah, we had three to, three to two that carries, but I don't, if Mr. Banks voted against it, it didn't, it didn't pass. And so, I don't know the answer to that. So, you're texting him right now? I apologize, colleagues. We're just gonna have to wait a minute. Lesson learned. He voted for. Okay. Thank you. So, it's a vote of four to two. Thank you. All right. So, payroll. Clerk?
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number three zero eight five six two, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on payroll. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Banks? Yay. Okay. Great. All right. It carries with a vote of six zero. All right. Item eleven.
Order amending the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three order of the council which authorized the mayor to execute a contract with Delta Dental to correct the description of plans that were offered.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? We did discuss it at length in work session yesterday. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Councilman Banks, yay.
Okay. Thank you. It's a vote of six zero. Item twelve.
Order authorizing renewal of a contract with Three P Benefit Solutions LLC to serve as administrator of a cafeteria plan for the city of Jackson pursuant to section one two five of the Internal Revenue Code and authorize execution of necessary documents related to the plan year January one, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the, on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed. Mr. Banks? Yay or nay?
He's typing.
Yay. Yay. Okay. It's, it's a vote of five in favor, one opposed. All right. Item thirteen.
Order ratifying and accepting a grant from the Center for Workforce Inclusions, Inc., in the amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand forty-seven dollars to support the senior aides program for a term of twelve months and authorize the mayor to execute all related and necessary documents.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stokes?
Who's gonna speak? Ms. T, Dr. Teller, you, the director?
There's, there's Dr. Scott. Oh.
I want to say first that the senior aide program is one of the best programs we've had in a long time, and the city is serving a very, very good purpose, helping our senior citizens and helping different divisions of government. And I do want to give my sympathy. I understand, yes, man, you lost your mother, Ms. Kyle, and so, we're praying for you, your family, and everyone else. But again, I think that if you have people that's not using the senior aide program, I hope that you'll work with them and instruct them to use it, because these aides work extremely hard, do quality work, and it's something good to help senior citizens. A lot of senior citizens, even though they might be retired, they still have that, they get up and go, and they really need a job like what y'all have created with the senior aide program. But again, Dr. Teller and others, thank y'all so much for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. And could you, you both please state your name for the record?
Dr. Connie Taylor, Human and Cultural Services.
Thank you. And?
I'm Cassandra Warren, Project Director of Human and Cultural Services.
Welcome. Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I just wanted to also thank the senior program and everything you guys are doing. We have a tremendous amount of seniors in my community, and, you know, we have to really, we have to take care of them. So, thank you for everything you're doing for them.
Thank you, Councilman Hart.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So... What magic did you?
Well, leave me on there, kind of.
Oh, Mrs. Teller? There we go. All righty. We just have a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in my nest up here.
I fixed it again.
All right. So, anyway. All right. So, colleagues, any other questions or comments on item thirteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Councilman Banks, yay.
I can, I see it. That, this system is working, Mr. Banks. Thank you. So, we have a vote of six zero. Thank you. We've already done fourteen. Item fifteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and related documents with Keep Jackson Beautiful, Inc., in the amount of forty thousand dollars to develop and promote litter prevention programs and activities in the city of Jackson for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? And Mr. Banks is a yes. All right. So, we have a vote of six zero. We've already done sixteen, seventeen.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Mississippi Transportation Commission and the city of Jackson for Woodrow Wilson Reservicing from Mill Street to Interstate Fifty-five, including concrete repair and replacement, STP dash seven two eight one dash zero 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 four, one zero seven five four nine dash seven zero one zero zero zero, seven zero two zero zero zero.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on this, on this project. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Oh, wait. Mr. Foot?
I'm just gonna say, it looks as if the department, MDOT, is putting up two point nine million dollars for this. Appreciate the efforts that Commissioner Simmons is doing to help us do that big improvement.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. The, the hole that we currently have at West Street, is there any way we can get it repaired? It's a, by the stadium, that left lane going toward the interstate on Woodrow Wilson and West is going between West and...
Yeah. Louis Wright, CAO, you're referring to the lane going east toward the interstate there in front of MDOT?
That's it.
Material testing site?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a bad sinkhole. We'll have Jackson Water to look at it to see if there's a, a collapsed sewer line or water line in that area. But I think we're gonna put some signs there because it is very dangerous. As people come through there, it's a real bad drop-off.
Yes.
But this will take care, once we've repaired that, this project is gonna smooth all of that out. From the bridge on Mill Street all the way to the interstate.
City is city property. You know, when you're on Fifty-five, going, I'm sorry, when you're on Woodrow Wilson, going twelve Fifty-five? You have to get, before you get to the VA, you have to get in the right lane, because it's pretty rough. Is that gonna be also repaired, or?
Yes.
I'm talking about that rough, rough thing?
Right. And there'll be a third lane coming off the interstate going west on Woodrow Wilson all the way to State Street. Very good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. That is gonna be a really great improvement for all of us. Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
And try to confer with Mr. Wright, but I'm making sure that this is the project that the city initially had funds and bid out, but MDOT asked to join in with us, and because there was a water line, that there was fear with respect to damaging that. And so, this has been a long time coming, at least a couple of years. So, I want to thank Commissioner Simmons. This, he inherited this issue because it even predated his time as commissioner. So, I want to thank him for helping us get this along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Colleagues, there are no other questions or comments on this project? All in favor? And Mr. Banks, I see, is a yes. So, all righty. Thank you. Eighteen.
Order authorizing the partial compromise and settlement of a claim for benefits under the Mississippi Workers Compensation Act and MWCC number one six zero two one two two seven dash P dash four three four three dash E twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. I think we did discuss this, I believe, yesterday. Any other questions or comments on this item, colleagues?
Clarification, please.
Mr. Martin? I think, Mr. Stokes would like just some clarification.
Could we get clarification without going to the executive session?
Executive session. Thank you. Yeah. Yes.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. This is the one that was updated at work session yesterday, but this is a former police officer, if I recall correctly, that has some long-term injuries that, and this is a settlement of all of their claims, except that he may need additional medical treatment in the future, and so it leaves open the claim on his medicals only. All other types of damages are resolved by this settlement.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. And Mr. Banks is a yes, so it's, it's six zero. All right. Item nineteen.
Resolution authorizing the condemnation of certain land, project parcel number zero zero one dash zero zero dash zero zero W, Sylvia Lawson for the Mega Evers Boulevard Race Grant Project, federal project number RAI dash seven two eight one dash zero 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 six LPA.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Mr. Martin? Ms. Sylvia passed several months ago. What's the main issue with this particular issue? Oh, I'm sorry. It had Martin over here. That's...
Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. With number nineteen, Sylvia Lawson, Ms. Lawson is deceased, so it's estate property. The right-of-way agent was able to contact, I think, all of the heirs, but one of the heirs hired an attorney, and they weren't able to, you know, reach any agreement with this attorney that was hired. It was unclear as to whether that attorney was representing all the heirs or just one of the heirs, so, you know, we, we just, they couldn't reach any agreement on that. So, we're gonna move forward. And then, on...
Well, let me ask this.
Sure.
As to the project itself, what's the timeframe? Beginning, ending, completion?
Oh, well, I mean, this won't, this won't hinder the project from moving forward, but I don't know exactly what the timeframe is on the...
It's all right.
Being bid out.
All right.
But, but these kind of, they won't, this is, this is to acquire...
Right of way.
But, but these kind of, they won't, this is, this is to acquire, I think most of these are like, for like 121 square feet for bus stations, they have to be relocated, but, but, you know, they can go ahead and bid it with like a restriction on working on those little areas until we actually get the property.
Finally, and I don't know who can answer this, it's a, they're putting up something at Woodrow Wilson at Five Points, I don't know if it's lights, or what, is this part of this project, or?
Louis Wright, CAO, that is not part of this project, the project that you're referring to is a traffic light project on Woodrow Wilson at Five Point, it's going to Bailey Avenue as well as to State Street, I believe, but we're redoing all of the parking, not parking, but traffic signals in that area.
Okay, but it's not part of the overall project?
No, it's not.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Just, not on the business, I, I don't know how I missed it, but to Ms. Sylvia's family, you know, Ms. Sylvia was a wonderful lady, that establishment is, was iconic in our city, and so I just want to express my condolences.
Thank you.
I did not, and I don't know, I guess that was some time ago, but I missed it, so...
She died maybe around three, four months ago, she...
About that long.
Yeah, about three or four months ago.
Okay, thank you, colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, oh, it's six zero, all right, item 20.
Resolution authorizing the condemnation of certain land, project parcel number 002-00-00-W, Arthur Bennett and Fanny Bennett for the Mega Evers Boulevard Raise Grant Project, federal
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues, this is, I think, similar to the one we just voted on, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
He said yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Six Zero, item 21.
Order reviewing and continue August 29, 2022, state of emergency.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, it's six zero, we, we're gonna table 22, as I announced earlier, item 23.
Order reviewing and continue state of emergency.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? He said, okay, it's six zero, all right, now, we're also tabling item 24, we've, we've taken care of item 25, 26, we had some discussion on that during public comment, I put this on the agenda because I had gotten comments from some of the residents in the area, but as they discussed, the property owners discussed this, we've got several city departments that are engaging with the business and the residents and are working on some solutions, and so I think, I think that we can move on on that one. All right, item 27, Mr. Brazil.
Thank you, Madam President, so, you know, this past budget season was probably one of the most grueling that we've been through, it was probably the longest that we've had in my first term here, and so, I know that we appropriated $423,642 for animal control and professional services, part of my ward is, especially in Southwest Jackson, is very wooded, and is beginning to look a lot like Jumanji out there, we have critters looking for a place to go, and I want to know where the city is with procuring those services to contract out animal control, because my residents need some assistance with that. I had a call the other day, somebody said they saw a wolf-looking dog in their yard, and you know, we don't need anybody's senior citizens who like to walk, or children playing in the street in the yard to get chased down by one of these animals and, you know, perhaps catch rabies.
George Jimmerson, Jackson Police Department, Captain, at this time, Councilman Brazil, we are working on an RFI for animal control, it's several components to that, and when we get the information and compile all the requirements and the need of the City of Jackson, it's just a tedious process, but we are gathering information to present that, so we can try to privatize or get some help with animal control.
Because right now, we don't have anything, right?
Correct.
And you say there's some, what are the steps to get the RFI out?
Well, as a request for information, we getting the information from surrounding areas and states on what they're doing and how they're doing it, so that we can formulate a plan to put together for the needs of the City of Jackson, you know, like I said, some is, one contractor, some, might be many contractors, but we're just trying to get the information that we need, so we can put it all together, so when we ask for this, we know what we're asking for.
I think when, when we put our heads together during this budget season, we reached out to Councilwoman Lindsay, with somebody in Kansas City, Kansas or Kansas City, Missouri?
Yes, that's right.
And they, they all, they, they're already contracting out their service, and so, I guess I would like some kind of timeline, because again, we got over $400,000 appropriated for this, the citizens are calling, again, the animals are starting to take over again, and we really need to nail this down as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll speak with Chief about releasing the timeline on it, it will take a little longer than a normal RF, you know, P in this circumstance, because we've never done this, and so we have to find out who in the area, you know, would be able to provide such services, and so, this has been a conversation in the making for some time, as Councilwoman Lindsay knows, I'm grateful to see that we're headed the direction of, you know, no longer making police officers deal with animal control, because that's not their expertise, so, but I will get with Chief Wade about establishing a timeline on that.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes and then Mr. Hartley.
Thank you, two things, the first issue that I'm concerned about is the money, we normally start collecting for the next year's taxes until somewhere around December, late November, December, so, even though we have a plan to allocate funds, I doubt the money is there now, even if you had someone you could do a contract with, second concern is buzzers, you know, I'm glad this is on the agenda, because we see a number of buzzers throughout this city, where dead dogs, whatever is dead in the middle of these streets, you got a gang of buzzers, and normally, you know, that's, it's not what you see in the city, you see that in the rural area, especially this time, where they getting ready for deer hunting, and they doing deer carcasses in these creeks and drainage, these buzzers are becoming a, a big problem throughout the city, so I hope we'll make some decision quickly on what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it, but I can see the mass logic in terms of why we're using police officers for animal control, like maybe another division of the city possibly could have done it, but I think that the problem that we're experiencing with the number of stray dogs in this city, dead animals in this city, and increasing buzzers in this city, is a major concern, so I'm glad Councilman Brazil put this item on the agenda, because we definitely need some solutions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley and then Mr. Mayor?
Yes, just wanted to go back through the processes, if some of, some of the citizens have an issue with dogs wandering through their streets, around their house, in their neighborhoods, they are to call your department?
Yes, call, call dispatch, the non-emergency line, 601-960-1234, and state their complaint or their issue, and they will forward that call on...
And that's mainly addressing aggressive animals?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, just to add on to that, presently, which is not a full solution, and we acknowledge that, they are working with surrounding areas, when you have an instance like that, to see if they can house that, that animal, with respect to Councilman Stokes' question, now, there should still be an ability to pick up dead carcasses, and they're still doing that, so we want to make sure that if someone is aware of a dead carcass and it hasn't been picked up, that they, we're encouraging them to call, so they can pick that up, that, that's not a matter of the animal control facility, because they're, you know, they're disposing of that carcass, so they can pick that up.
And what number do they call, Mr. Mayor? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brazil, did you have a wrap-up?
So they call the, the JPD, non-emergency number for a dead carcass? Okay.
Okay, thank you, and...
An animal dead carcass.
That, yes, good point, good point.
Or both, right, either or, right, so, thank you, Mr. Brazil, for putting this item on, as you know, this has been a passionate conversation of mine for the whole time I've been on the, on the council, and so, I am a little curious, because Mr. Brazil asked the question, current, or it's kind of a statement, currently we don't have anything, right, and you said, that's right, I need you to define what that means, I, I don't, I need some, I need to know what, what that means.
When we say anything, that don't mean that we don't do services for animal control, because we do, we still very much have animal control unit, just like Mr. Mayor stated, if you have a dead carcass or aggressive animal, please call that number that I gave out, the non-emergency line, and we will handle it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, but, so what does it mean when you say we don't have anything?
Well, we outsource, we, we call our partners here in the city, Mississippi Animal Rescue League and various shelters that we do have partnerships with, that if we have to get an animal or do something with it, we call our partners and they will assist us in some manner.
Would it be fair to say that what you mean is that we don't personally house the animal?
Correct, absolutely.
Thank you, that helps me a lot, but I am very excited about the fact, this next step, and I'm, like Councilman Brazil, I'm really anxious to see that get underway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for following up on that. All right, we're gonna move along now to Mosley Avenue.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam President, this is a beautiful street, runs off of Northside Drive, it's in the Fernaddishon community, it's an abandoned apartment complex that's destroying the quality of life in that area, my concern is that as hotels old and the homeless get ready for, prepare for winter, they're coming west on Northside Drive, and it's places like Mosley Avenue, where there's an abandoned apartment complex, and any abandoned homes will become targets for the homeless, senior citizens and elderly citizens in these areas, they've had quiet enjoyment, and it's something that we do not pay a lot of attention to, there's a lot of parts of Jackson, there's no crime, when you hear about something happening in Jackson, you think it's citywide, but there's a lot of neighborhoods, there's a lot of communities, there's absolutely zero crime, and what we want to do in these areas, like Mosley Street, where there's no crime, is let's keep it like that, let's make sure that if the City of Jackson need to go in, and we understand, we've been on this council long enough, and we've seen the tricks before, when they build up these buildings, they know they coming through the back, you don't see them through the front, they're gonna do all the things we've heard of and seen before, they boarded up this apartment complex, so we know they gonna come through the back and prostitute and steal, going to people's homes, and whatever they steal out these homes, they taking in these abandoned apartments, and then they'll come out at night, use the black garbage bags to sell them on the streets, we see it, brother, I shouldn't seen it long enough, we all, we all know the game, it's nothing new, that's why we got to make sure the people who own these places must sell them, if you're not gonna sell them to the City of Jackson, you need to make sure you let them know, we're not gonna allow you to destroy the quiet enjoyment of these neighborhoods, and I asked, remember this, by just right up, right down Mosley Street, Fernaddishon is a large community, and you can see all the lovely homes, they keep the grass cut, and they do all the things that a homeowner, a person who love and raised their children and grandchildren, won't in the City of Jackson, so I placed this item on the agenda, hopefully we get the city to pay close attention to it, and if it's somebody that we need to contact, let's contact these people and let them know that we're concerned about what they allowing to happen in this neighborhood, because they will not sell property that they own, but they got a for sale sign, and they said, we've done enough by boarding it up, and we all know that you killing the community by you not acting in a responsible manner, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I'll defer to our, our...
I just wanted, Latonya Miller, Gold Services, I wanted to provide an update regarding the apartment complex, we were able to reach out to the owners, they cleaned it up by the 17th, and they'll patrol every two days until sale, which is supposed to be this Friday, the 25th, the new owners have been instructed to contact our office with their plan of returning future dumping and their timeline for bringing the property up to...
Yes, Madam President, may I thank them, because they had already started dumping, leaves, limbs, garbage, what we're gonna have to do in the old days, they used to make them come to the city, and they had to bring some banking information, where's your money, do you have money to improve, bring your bank, or otherwise, they holding property, they have no money to make improvements, and they slowly running down that community, because people afraid, and as they move out, the other people gonna sell their property a lot cheaper, and the quality of life will go down, but I thank you so much for going out there and making sure we getting in touch with them, because we're gonna fight to try to keep these neighborhoods where there's no crime, crime-free, and, and that's the message that's got to come out of Jackson, all of Jackson not bad.
All right.
You got the few bad spots, they are few, the great good spots way outnumber the bad spots, but when you hear some of the reports, you think all of it is bad, all of it has crimes, we got murders on every block and every neighborhood, some neighborhoods never been a killing, a shooting, or, you know, not even a fire, so, you know, that's the message that got to go out, thank you so much, man.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I thank my colleagues for those comments, also, you know, during the past budget, we made a big effort to make sure that code enforcement was staffed and had the resources at need in order to do the job, and Mr. Stokes, I, I believe another message that we need to get out is to these businesses that don't, where the owners and managers and their system, they don't live in the community, and they bring down the community, whether it's gas stations where folks are being killed in, or whether it's houses that folks just leave, they're, they're destroying our community, a lot, or, or if there's investors that's out there, who don't bother to come in to clean up their property, hoping it, okay, I'm gonna buy this cheap, and the city, when it returns, I'll be sitting on something, well, we have to do our, our, the message, or send the message out to them is, no, no, you can't just leave this, this, this terrible situation for the, for the neighbors and the rest of the city to hold on to, to help, and it's even harder for us to rebuild when people have those type attitudes, so, I'm hoping that we can continue, and as the gentleman came in this morning, we have to, we have to take a firm line, and I wish we could just put folks in jail, again, to service stations where they have criminal activities, to folks leaving the properties, we have to toe a hard line, and hey, anything you guys support, push past this, this office, this ward, I'm gonna be supporting it, because this is not the way we're gonna make our city whole, is by folks bearing their head in the sand and they say, well, I don't have any responsibility, because they do, and so I support you and the, the planning department and everything you guys do, but the message need to be clear, we're gonna toe a hard line here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hartley, all right, and thank you for putting this item on, Mr. Stokes, all right, we're gonna move on now to your other item, Mr. Stokes, garbage fencing.
Thank you, and Ms. Angworth is here, and Ms. Angworth's Mike, help us with this and legal, the concern is, we keep hearing from... The concern is, we keep hearing from businesses that now they want metal fencing, which costs a lot more, and they used to have, uh, they could do wood fencing, uh, and I, I guess my concern, uh, when did we move to metal fencing? And what was wrong with wood fencing? In terms of the businesses, a lot of businesses just can't afford these metal fencing.
Uh, yes, Ms. Ainsworth?
Good morning, um, Esther Ainsworth, zoning administrator for the City of Jackson. Um, you're right, Mr. Stokes, uh, up until a couple of years ago, treated wood was an option for the dumpster enclosures. However, in our work with the fire department, we found out that, excuse me, wood enclosures were, wooden enclosures were in violation of the, um, 2018 International Fire Code. Um, and according to that code, the refuse areas are supposed to be clear of anything that's combustible. And as a result of that, we changed the regulations for the dumpster enclosures to include non-combustible materials. And one of those materials does include some type of metal, or it can be masonry. But that's the purpose that, for which it was changed, was because it was in violation of an ordinance or an international code that was in place.
Okay.
And in terms of the, uh, could we not have amended the, uh, ordinance in terms of creating leeway, some exceptions where they could have come to your office? And if it's not in a major concern, our affordability is an issue that we could have given them more time. Most of them can't afford these mom and pop stores and people like that. I know some of the bigger businesses where they have, um, expense accounts and lines of credit, it, it's no problem. But some of these stores have had these treatable wood enclosures for dumpsters for many, many, many years, and there's not been any problem. So as we amend the ordinance, could we amend the ordinance where we show some sensitivity toward businesses that really can't afford, um, what these businesses with a lot of money are making? If that mean amend it where they had to come before you and your people go out there to assess that situation, um, I think that should be done. But the next thing they complain about is that they've been threatened, they're gonna be taken to court, and they got to get lawyers and everything, um, for a garbage can. That's, you know, it, where they, where they calling, you saying, kid, are we talking about a garbage can? You know, I said, well, let's bring it to the council, we'll discuss it, because it's a win-win in there. I can understand, you know, being safe and making sure the fire department, but a lot of these businesses haven't had any fires forever. They've been in business 20 years, badly making it. But now we're saying, boom, you got to go in and, um, and, and put up these iron fences, and then you got to get a company like Jeff Coles or somebody who charge a lot of money. You know, somewhere down the line, I hope we'll revisit this ordinance, and let's give some discretion, uh, to your office. If it's a place where we've had fires or other issues, then something must be done. But if it's a place where there's no problem, then I don't think we should create a problem. Thank you.
Mr. Hartley, and then Mr. Mayor.
And, and I, I agree with my colleague. I've gotten numerous, uh, or had numerous discussions with folks about the fence, okay? And a lot of folks complained that, um, yeah, they, they didn't really understand it, you know, why we have, you know, abandoned properties, all these other issues, and there's an issue that hadn't happened or is not a direct threat. So, and, and I understand, and I understand the, uh, the fire department, but it, does this require an ordinance change?
It, it does, because, um...
I mean, for it to go into effect?
Yes, sir, the dumpster enclosures are, uh, the regulations for those are in our landscape ordinance. Though, those are there at section 13.02 of the landscape ordinance, and it, and like I said, it was amended in November of 2022. That's when the amendment was done. Uh, and if I may address Mr. Stokes's concern about, do we provide any leeway? Now, for those, first of all, let me say that the landscape ordinance has been in effect since 1996, and I, I don't think we have done, in the past, we didn't do a very good job of enforcing the landscape ordinance, because there's also other regulations that say commercial businesses have to provide a means by which their garbage can be addressed. Okay? And for those businesses that have wood fences, when the ordinance was changed, they became a grandfathered structure. And so what we do is, if they have a dumpster enclosure that's made out of wood, and it needs to be maintenance, then we will allow them to go ahead and bring it into a good condition. But most of the time, what happens is, they'll let the gates fall off, um, planks are missing, or they just have the post where they were. And, and we try to explain to them that they have to be enclosed. Now, if you have a wood fence, we'll allow you to go ahead and replace it as a maintenance. But if it's to the point that it can't be properly maintained, then you have to come into compliance. And now the ordinance also says that if you come to environmental court and you are found guilty of the violation, then there is potentially that you will be fined. That's what it says, and that most of the times it's treated as a misdemeanor. No one's ever gone to jail because they didn't, you know, um, enclose their dumpster, because we'll give them an opportunity to do that. Um, they read it.
Yeah.
Get anxious.
Yeah.
And say, you're gonna take me to jail because I didn't include, enclose my dumpster, but that's not what it says, that's in the penalty section. So if you're found guilty, then you pay the price for being guilty.
Yeah, just one other, one other question.
Mr. Hartley?
And I, I'm thankful that you'll, uh, I think it's important here that we educate folks, that we put it out there. Here are the different things, because, uh, and again, a lot of folks, business people, we're trying to hold on to them, trying to make sure that, um, that we can help them as much as possible to succeed, uh, and then they go, hey, you know, they, a lot of times it's worst-case scenario for them. Uh, one thing is, do you have a template or something that, when you're out there talking with folks, okay, you can either upgrade and, uh, repair and be grandfathered in with the wood fence, or something simple as, um, I've seen people use metal roofing awning as this, for the side walls and the doors? Anything that's, uh, you know, a low, low-budget, uh, template of how they can, uh, put up something?
Well, we do, sometimes people will ask us if we have any examples of how it should be enclosed, and we'll share with them some sites that have enclosed them. Um, and then, you know, we try to talk through the detail of what needs to be done. When the violation notice is issued, all of the requirements are there, and we ask them to please contact us so that we can explain it to them. And now that we have our open gov system, we also put their emails in when we can get them and tell them to reach out to us so that we can explain to them what it is they need to do. And most of the time, most of the time, we don't hear from them about the violation until they get the summons for environmental court.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, brief, brief follow-up. Um, I was initially gonna ask, when did these notices initially go out? But it, it sounds like for various businesses, it went out at different times, depending on the status of their enclosure. Um, when someone gets a notification that they have to, you know, uh, in your view, uh, do a metal enclosure, how much time are we giving them before they come in compliance?
The, the, the ordinance says 45 days, but in, in many instances, they've had a year, if not longer, you know, to do it. Because like I said, we do try to work with them to get that taken care of. And, and a part of our problem is, is that a lot of times, people will take over the businesses of a grandparent, and the notices have to be sent to the owner of record. And then sometimes that information is not up to par. It's not accurate. And so, um, when, when a grandparent or another elderly person gets it, of course, they panic. And then a guy told me yesterday, oh, I saw that letter, I just didn't open it.
Yep. So, so I, recommendation that I want maybe for everyone to consider, uh, while I certainly believe that y'all are as sensitive as you can be, I think that it's always a good practice to standardize, uh, you know, our practices, so if we feel that there needs to be a more lenient grace period. While I know that you are, you know, trying to do everything that you can to push, and you say in many instances, it is a year, right? And I'm not saying that it should be a year, but possibly we could consider, you know, extending that timeframe, because we have a number of businesses that can't afford to do it, that gives them, you know, we stamp, we write into, or you, you, you accept into your code, right, uh, your ordinances, that will extend the period of time. I, recommendation, and, and that doesn't necessarily, if you've already been giving a year, it doesn't necessarily change what you're doing, but it gives them within our ordinances a, a, uh, longer runway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, well, thank y'all, and thank you for being with us, Ms. Ainsworth.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Could I just say, we take that as a friendly amendment from the mayor, and maybe we can draw up, uh, we give a discretion to, uh, Mr. Ainsworth and her department, uh, as we try to rewrite or come up with some avenue that's acceptable, I hope legal would be the one draw it. Uh, but we do not want to make citizens feel that in government, we overburden heavy-handed, where we don't have to be. So, you know, discretion would be in, in their, their avenue, but I think the suggestion of the mayor was a very good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and thank you for putting this on the agenda, um, and thank you for being with us, Ms. Ainsworth. Um, that is an important, it is, it is actually a really important thing to consider. All right, um, Mr. Martin, you're next with litigation. Are we gonna have to go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're putting you last. All right, so item 31.
Yeah.
Yeah, so item 31, uh, is review and continuation of COVID-19 local emergency. Jackson City Council, anybody have any problems with that or any conversation about that? Okay, we'll continue that. All right, number 32, colleagues, just a show of hands, a monthly financial reports is required according to section 21 dash 35 dash 13 of the Mississippi Code annotated of 1972. I saw mine, I got it, did y'all?
Banks showed it.
Banks, got, yep, Banks is good. Mr. Foot, did you raise your hand up? No? Mr. Stokes?
No.
Okay. All right. Now, we, I will now, colleagues, I will take a motion.
Can I do it now? The announcement?
Yeah, oh, you got an announcement, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Madam President, we lost a great city employee from the sign shop, Mr. Reginald Watkins, who we'll closer meaning his honor, and also Mrs. Vanilla Glass, um, Mr. John Ettrich III, and Mr. Johnny Hooker Moore. And, uh, Madam President, we want to encourage everyone to get out and vote. Um, these elections are extremely important. On Sunday, we'll have a voter rally, get out to vote rally in Fernaddition, um, at True Believers Church at 3 o'clock. Wednesday, we'll have a voter rally at Freeland's, uh, on Mill Street, for, for the Mill Street, uh, next Wednesday, Wednesday before Halloween at 6 o'clock. We have some people come out, candidates and everyone else. And then on Sunday before the election, we're gonna have a voter rally with cheerleaders and everything at Grove Park, trying to get everyone in the, in the mindset, this election is extremely, extremely important. Please don't make excuses. Get out and vote. I'm trying to tell you who to vote for, do, do I want to vote for the black president, but you vote for the person of your choice.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Brazil and then Mr. Hartley.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask colleagues that we close today's meeting in honor of Mrs. Odessa Woodson, a longtime educator, uh, Bel Air resident, she passed away this weekend, and also Dr. Andre Matthews, the owner of Matthews Chiropractic Clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, uh, along the voting line, there will be, uh, an event today, this evening at 5:30, at, uh, 5:30 to 6:30, uh, encouraging everyone to vote. That's gonna be at Jackson Medical Mall, Center Stage on Woodrow Wilson. It's called Flip, Flip the Sip From Red to Blue. Again, that's the Jackson Medical Mall, Center Stage at, today, from, uh, 5:30 to 6:30 PM. Uh, Reef, also, Reefill Jackson will be holding a, a, a press conference to announce, uh, launch of a Green Corp, uh, program at Jane Avenue, uh, on October the 21st, that's Thursday. Um, and, uh, so we look forward to folks there. Uh, Senior Gratitude Day will be on October the 25th at the Jackson Medical Mall, and that time, it starts at 10 a.m. and 10 till 2. And also Oktoberfest, uh, where they're gonna emphasize voting, it will be on this coming Saturday at the Jane Avenue Park, and, uh, they're gonna have vendors, entertainers, candidates, anyone can sign up, uh, but Jane Avenue Park at 3, 3615 Jane Avenue, that's over near the Police Academy. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right, colleagues, I will, oh, Mr., okay, sorry, y'all. I am ready to go, but y'all go, y'all go. Mr.?
I was just gonna mention, for, particularly for the interest of the media, that for those interested in the O Hotel and the record of the O Hotel over the past four or five years, uh, it's thoroughly documented in item five, which is past minutes, it goes through the municipal court records with rulings by Jeff, uh, Judge Jeff Reynolds and others. And so that's a good record that's, you can go back and look at the specifics on the challenges that the city's faced with the O Hotel and the, um, uh, lack of response by the current owners.
Thank you for that, Mr. Foot, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor?
I'm absent, uh, actual specific times of my announcements, I was looking around for them, but I do know that Boo at the Zoo, uh, is coming up very soon here, uh, and we're also having a, uh, Christmas parade coming up soon, and that will be in evening. I'm sorry that I can't give specifics, because I don't have those announcements in front of me. Uh, Ward Two residents, we've talked a lot about voting, but we have to remind Ward Two residents that they are actually voting today, uh, in that runoff election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, colleagues, I will take a, um, a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing, uh, legal matters, including, well, it just says litigation and legal matters. Litigation, legal matters.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session, all in favor. Okay, uh, is Mr. Banks still there?
He's gone.
No, he is, no, he there, he is.
There you go. He said aye.
He said aye, okay. All right, we are now in closed session, so executive session, no official action was taken. Um, colleagues, uh, anyone have anything else to come before this body today? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.